Okay, welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. I'm going to call our meeting to order. We have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records show that all members are present.
If you all rise and put your hand over your heart, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Franklin. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed on the presentation portion of the agenda only. To speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the clerk's secretary staff. And speaker slips are available just outside the city council chambers. Speakers will have three minutes to address the city council. And with that, we'll have approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Our consent calendar is next, and the recommendations in the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 14 consent items this evening. Do I have any pulled by the public? Nothing pulled by the... I would consider a motion if there's none. Oh, I see down here. Councilmember Contreras.
Yes, I would like to pull C4 and C13, please. I'll make a motion to accept the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay, so I have a second.
I'll second.
For green, okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Would you like a report on the item C4?
Yes, I would love to have a staff report on C4, please. Law enforcement services agreement.
Mayor City Clerk Kathy Valdez will give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The item before you is the contract with the County of San Diego for law enforcement services from the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. The contract is jointly negotiated within the county and the nine cities, collectively the contract cities, taking advantage of common needs and economies of scale that result in a lower cost for law enforcement services than having a municipal police department or individually contracting with the county. A committee was formed to negotiate new agreement on behalf of the contract cities, consisting of representatives from the cities Imperial Beach, Palway, and San Marcos, representing a small, medium, and large contract city respectively. The proposed five-year agreement for law enforcement services covers fiscal years 2022, '23 through 2026, '27. The rate increases over the five-year term of agreement are 1% each in years one and two, and 3.5% in each of years three through five. This is a great deal for the contract cities. The total rate increase over the five-year term is 12.5% compared to 27% increases over the last five-year contract. The city will save over $1 million in the line item for law enforcement services in the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget, and will realize significant savings compared to anticipated costs in the following four years. In each of the two previous years, the contract with the sheriff's department had average increases of more than $1 million each year. Increases over the next two years will be an average of $375,000, with the total contract increasing from $26,458,743 to $26,942,596, then to $27,212 and $22, which includes the additional cost of a deputy. The Board of Supervisors was very supportive of the proposed agreement and approved it unanimously at their January 25, 2022, meeting. The governing bodies of all participating agencies must individually approve the agreement. All contract cities are taking an agreement to their respective councils in March and early April. Staff recommends the city council approve the agreement with the County of San Diego and the San Diego County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement services. That completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much for the report. You know, one of the... This is probably one of the biggest items as far as cost, as far as importance for our community, this aspect of public safety with law enforcement. And, you know, I know we've had the discussion in the past. Previous councils have discussed the significant cost of having a municipal police department versus contracting with the sheriffs, the county sheriff's department. I will tell you that I am very pleased that there's a substantial decrease in the cost of this contract. You know, we're looking at 12.5% total over the five years versus a 27% increase. But that also begs more questions. You know, why is it that we are being charged so much in the past? What is it that we can, you know, continue to do or that the county can continue to do at the county level to reduce the year-over-year increase in these contracts? But, you know, one of the things that I have to say is that I... For this agenda report, there isn't a lot of information. It simply is the contract. And I dug into the contract a little bit. I, you know, had gone through it previously. And it's only every five years. So I think it's important for us to kind of address some of the aspects of this contract. And I don't know if we have the ability in this meeting, if there's a representative that's able to answer these questions beyond, you know, maybe Patrick or city manager. But I want to start off discussing the number of volunteers that we have, which is 13 volunteers. It states that it's a significant... There's been... COVID-19 has significantly impacted the ability of us to have volunteers. So I wanted to see if anybody could speak on that. What specifically about COVID-19 is hindering volunteers? Is this... When we're talking about volunteers, are we talking about the YANA program? I just kind of want to know a little bit more about this because 13 is not a very high number. And I feel, you know, what is the disconnect? COVID has been here for years, and it doesn't seem to 100% be subsiding. So I want to be able to address this issue and whether or not that's something that needs to be, you know, amended to the contract. Again, I understand we're one of nine cities. But that's my first question, and I wanted to see if anybody could address that.
Sure, I'll take that one. So we're talking about senior volunteers. And at one point in time, a number of years ago, we were as high as about 38 volunteers. I think it averaged just prior to COVID in the mid-20s. And now we're down to 13, as you stated. But COVID has really, really hit that group particularly hard. They weren't allowed to go to the station because of protocol. Therefore, they weren't allowed to drive in vehicles together. And it really hurt the numbers. And when people who volunteer on a regular basis, two times a week, have life changes for a year or two, they fall out of practice. Some may not be able to volunteer anymore. But we're certainly looking at boosting that number. We're going to be hanging a banner over Vista Village. We put a notification within our email blast that went out Monday morning. The mayor's going to make an announcement tonight, I think, about volunteerism. And we're going to put an advertisement in our Vista magazine to try to increase those now that COVID is waning, I would say, and that people are allowed to be in the station again and working together and driving in cars per the government governors' orders earlier this last month, I should say.
Okay, and just a follow-up question on that. The resources that are going to be utilized to extend more forms of communication so that we can have a better outreach and potentially better outcome of, you know, being able to get volunteers. Does that cost... Is that something that the city incurs? Or is that a cost that's built into the contract?
No, it's typically a cost the city incurs. But I will tell you, for what I just mentioned, we already have the banner. It's just a matter of having a spot available and putting it up. We already own the magazine, or we, you know, fund the magazine, I should say, that we send out. So the costs are minimal in that sense. But as part of our costs that we budget for, outside of the contract, we do pay for uniforms. So if there's 10 new sheriff's volunteers, we do pay for uniforms for them. And so that would be a cost that the city bears.
Okay, and do you know on average about how much that costs us per year? I mean, that might be difficult because some volunteers come in a year and maybe stay for a few years. But I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I think at the end of the day, the volunteer aspect is extremely crucial to our overall law enforcement services. And I just want to make sure, you know, I've heard from the community several times that they don't necessarily feel like there's a lot of work happening on our end to drive more communication, to get more volunteers. And I'm wondering also, you know, we have a limited budget. I'm wondering, you know, if this is something that our county sheriff's department can also help in drive more communication so that we could get more volunteers. So I don't exactly know, you know, how to insert that. And we probably can't at this point. But that's something that I want the county Board of Supervisors to understand that we do have the potential for a lot more volunteers than what we have. And I don't think it's okay for it to fall simply on the individual cities for recruitment and retention. So I would like to see a little bit more cost sharing in this respect.
And I would say that it doesn't fall necessarily just on the city, that the county does do recruitment for volunteers. But obviously, they have not only the contract cities, but the county areas as well as substations that also have volunteers. So I can assure you that the more volunteers we have, because the volunteers serve the deputies and the CSOs in a great way, we will find the money for those volunteers. But we hadn't done much recruiting in the past two years. So your information is correct because there was COVID, and there wasn't a whole lot for the volunteers to be able to do. There was a minimal number of volunteers that could do office work, but they weren't out in the field. But now that they can be out in the field, we will be much more aggressive with that.
Okay, that sounds good. And also, you know, just to follow up on that point, we do have a city where we have a large Spanish-speaking population. So I don't know what kind of tools we have to address perhaps a gap in volunteers that are also bilingual. That's just a crucial aspect. So can you share with me any practices that the county or our city has to be able to recruit in Spanish? I mean, if someone has maybe limited English, is, you know, a big asset to the community and that they know so many people in the neighborhood and they want to participate, are they able to? Or do we have to build out this program more than where it's at right now?
I think it's shared. The county did, I believe, host their first... Maybe it wasn't their first, but they hosted a law enforcement academy that was aimed at people that were bilingual and Spanish speakers. So that is one way to get people involved. And we can certainly advertise in areas where we can attract people that are bilingual, because I agree, it's very important to have that aspect in our community. So we can make a concerted effort at that. And we can work with the county and find out what else they're doing and possibly look at bringing the law enforcement academy to Vista for Spanish speakers.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. I mean, this is an aspect of the contract that I actually would be happy to discuss. You know, what is it that we can do to expand it? Okay, so I guess I'll just be following up on how that process unfolds of ensuring that we're doing more outreach and that we're also trying to attract individuals that can speak Spanish, because that's going to be crucial. I want to move on to page 5 of 41. Under number two, scope of services, subsection B, law enforcement services. It states... Okay, let's see where I want to start reading this. I'm just going to highlight this last little part that says "all to the extent necessary and appropriate to meet the standards of service." Is that kind of like the standards of coverage for the fire department? Or I just couldn't find more information on the standards of services. So I was curious to see what those metrics are and if the standard of service is something that can be used as far as a data set to understand if we have the appropriate number of deputies or not.
No, and it's not like constant staffing or the standard of cover through the fire department. We do have our captain and soon-to-be commander, Justin White, with us. And we also have Assistant Sheriff Dave Brown that might be able to answer that question better than I could.
Yeah, you know, and there might not be a, you know, solid answer for it. But I'm just curious to see, in this contract, what's the data that we can utilize to kind of start like a best practices here in this city and perhaps in other contract cities, not only to address the rising costs, but to understand where our staffing levels are with our sheriff's department and whether or not that staffing level needs to change? Because there's so many different categories, whether it's, you know, traffic or the cops deputies. So I would love it if we could have someone from the department just kind of give us some more information on that aspect.
Councilmember Contreras, if I may. It actually refers to section four, which starts on page six. So that sentence continued on the next page, which didn't really look like it did. So it was a little confusing. But so there are some standards of service there, but I'm not sure if you're looking for some more detail than that.
Yeah, I want to look at a little bit more detail because I know that this has been a topic of conversation here in the city. And, you know, public safety is one of our biggest priorities, both on the fireside, paramedics, and law enforcement. And so, you know, I want to be able to start a system of best practices that will allow us to figure out, hey, you know what? The call volume's too high. We need, you know, X amount more deputies. Or, you know, are we trying to put too much burden on our deputies to do too many things at once? And are there parallel services that we can create that are social services that could help the department and the city reach our crime prevention and reduction strategies?
Okay, and I'll let the captain or the assistant sheriff answer the question. But these are related to performance standards. But one of the things you brought up was, do we have enough deputies? What's that ratio, so to speak? And we talked about that in our goal-setting session. And that's one of the things that staff, along with the sheriff's department, is working on coming up a measurable approach to bring back to you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Assistant Sheriff Dave Brown.
Hi. And to far I mention, I just want to mention that I am a product of Vista. I spent 12 years here as I began my career. Patrick and I know each other from, I think, the 90s. Until I became a sergeant, I was here in every rank, detective, community policing. The... I was the first senior volunteer coordinator in Vista some 27 years ago or whatever it was when we started the program. And on that lines, I can, just to sort of back up some of the things Patrick said about COVID. COVID really impacted us in volunteers, not in Vista, everywhere. And one of the problems is, is that for their safety, they travel in pairs, and we couldn't have two in a car. Most of them are senior citizens who were more concerned about COVID than many of the deputies were. You can't increase their pay. So you can only get those to volunteer that want to volunteer, and if they're afraid. And there was a lot of uncertainty, especially before vaccines and even after. And there was policies about it. And if it's for free, maybe they just don't want to take that risk. We saw there's constantly a sort of aging out. And we don't like them to drive themselves because when they back, it's a policy that somebody gets out and inspects where they're backing up. When they go, most of what they do is community caretaking. Vacation checks, when people are on vacation. They run a program called the You Are Not Alone program. And these are elderly people that live alone, and they check on them regularly. We transitioned down to phone calls. And we were sending deputies to those calls. Some of the senior volunteers are, we're going to work no matter what the risks were. But it's difficult to recruit because it is... For a couple of years, there was a little touch and go as far as what's the danger level. And they're going to interact with strangers as well. And they're going to also possibly expose these people that are elderly and live alone to us. So we tried to keep that space. We weren't going into people's homes as much because we didn't want to get them sick. And if the senior volunteers going into 12 homes a day, that they could become a vector. So it was a lot of things. It's a social program in a way. A lot of the rewards they get is the interaction with each other and people. We just had our first, and it was very small, academy graduate. It's a two-week academy for the senior volunteers, so it's 80 hours. And it's very difficult to do that socially distanced. It's all hands-on. You can't do it virtually. So we found the same problems with our law enforcement academies, the junior colleges. We knew them had shut down. We couldn't, you know, it's hard to socially distance and teach wrestling and things like that. So we had much smaller academies. That is over. And countywide, we're going into full recruitment to build those numbers back up. And we think there'll be a lot of people that want to come out and do it. It's just because the fear will be gone, that what they do. And they can ride together in a car. And there can be the lunch that they go to and the meeting. And in any volunteer organization, some of that interaction with each other is important. In the early days of COVID until recently, we just... Anybody extra in the station was opposed the risk to them and us. And we had to take those steps. So it's... Hopefully, that's all in the rearview mirror. And I'd love to get the senior volunteers back up to in the 30s and 40s. They help out at all the events, and they recruit each other. That's the other thing. A lot of them aren't on social media. They may not notice the sign. But one of them's in the Elks, and one's in the VFW, and then one's in the... And so they recruit each other, and they see each other in the uniform or out in town. And that becomes, you know, they recruit. I'm hoping it feels like we've returned to normal when I drove in and saw people moving around. And I'm hoping that that will just naturally solve itself. And the second piece on the social service side, it's not something you should worry about spending your budget on, the mobile crisis response teams, the crisis stabilization units. All of that is set to expand. It's turned out to be far more successful than we had hoped. It didn't supplant what the psychiatric emergency response team does. It's augmented it. But also, it's providing a better service from what we hope is, it'll reduce the number of crises by stopping them earlier and giving options. And now we're up to almost 75% of the people going to crisis stabilization units. And there's more than one, and we hope to have a dozen out there in all regions. But it was started in the North County as a pilot, and it worked. But 75% of the people going to receive those services don't involve police at all. Their family brings them. They go themselves. If somebody else bring them, they don't always require the mobile crisis response team to do it. So there's a lot of ways. And we kind of figured if we could remove ourselves from that equation, we can reduce use of force. We can reduce negative interactions. And we're... That's the path we're on as a department. You won't need to do any of that because it's actually, we're working with HHSA, and they're taking that. We're just helping them. We'll be on the same radio. But we're kind of letting them do their thing separately. And if they need help, we'll come help you. And then we triage those calls at the comm center. So this person has, you know, a weapon, probably going to send the per team. This person is just, you know, they need intervention now. We're going to send the response team. And this person just needs somebody to talk to. Maybe they could drive down to one of the stabilization units. You know, they can only... And they're currently building facilities too, at Tri-City and other places. So as these things... This was a gap. It's been a gap for decades. It's being filled. And you won't need to spend the money, the limited dollars you have on that. The contract is primarily just the setting of the rate. What's the rate of increase? And we took a great... And I was the lead negotiator for the county, and I was the junior negotiator five years ago. And one of the reasons those numbers were high, a lot of them had to do with the pension. There's a lot of ways to formulate a contract. You can have it be, hey, at the end of the year, we'll just chew up on what it cost us, and you pay that. But cities, and having been a station commander for both Imperial Beach and San Marcos and sitting through budget meetings, certainty matters to a city. Being able to plan out what's it going to cost me in three years matters. Not, we'll just see what the bill ends up at the end of the year. Because cities can't print money, and they don't like to borrow money. And so predictability is important. We looked at this as, how can we possibly bring it to the lowest cost? We never make a profit on it, and we can't lose money on it. We're trying to get even. The last contract over five years was $600 million with the nine cities, and we got within a million bucks. But we ended up in great shape with our pension fund, had a couple of great years, was well-managed, and we didn't anticipate a lot of increases. And we found efficiencies in the department. So when you look at it to say 2022 to '23 is going to be a 1% increase, nothing you will buy with dollars will have a 1% increase except this. And it'll be our responsibility to maintain that, and for two years. But the county, myself, and I'd spent more than half of my career working for a city, you know, entrenched in their process as much as the county, want to do whatever we can to help cities. They... It hasn't been the best two years. There's things they've got to overcome and get back to normal businesses, people. Let's do what we... If we can create every efficiency we can, and hopefully we make it. It looks like a steeper hill to climb than seven months ago when we negotiated these numbers. But we used a formula we didn't guess, and we've been right for 30 years, within 1%. So our goal is to end up to make it as cheap as possible. The other issue on the level of service portion, so that doesn't pertain to Vista so much. There are very small cities or micro cities, and they can't go down to less than two officers. You can't have one officer handle a town. So there are some minimums. We have some standards. You know, I can't send somebody to domestic violence call by themselves. Or if they happen to arrest somebody, we're just not going to have police for seven hours. That doesn't meet the minimums. But that deals with the smaller cities, and some of them are close to others, and they'll have arrangements and crossover. Vista being our largest contract city and on par with some of the other two or three other large cities, we don't ever really have a minimum that you... You know, you're not going to try to go down to three officers or any of that stuff. You're going to want to match your law enforcement with your needs. You don't want to overspend, but you don't want to underserve the community. So we leave that open. It's not in the contract. You're not committed. It's a cafeteria style. This is sort of your base level patrol and traffic that you're required and mandated to provide. And then there's a lot of things you can choose to do. I want more of this. I want more of that. Or your captain, the outgoing captain, Justin White, who we promoted, and he's going to be running all the patrol stations. So he'll be the boss of your new captain, Rick Lopez. They may come to you or to Patrick with a recommendation of, yeah, we really need a little bit more here. Or I'd like to change this into this because societies and life and times change. And we want, and we're very adaptable. The contract does not, you know, hold you to any one thing as far as how it looks. But there is a minimum base amount of patrol based on the population and the calls, and a minimum traffic response because a city's required to deal with traffic accidents and respond to those things. And then the rest of it is, we can talk about it all.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate just thoroughly looking at this information. You know, as we continue to move on into the 21st century, I was curious about the ancillary services. And where it says information technology support, does that have anything to do with cybersecurity? Because in the future, we are in the future now. I know that that's a threat to our cities. So is there a separate service that the sheriff's department has? Whether it's newer or if it is on the horizon to kind of address cybersecurity?
So we have a variety of things. And there have been cyber cities, cyber city, or cyber attacks at other cities. We don't control or have access to cities' IT. Your database is your computer system. That's yours. Some cities buy an insurance or this or that. In all of the data that we have, we handle all of that. However... However, when a cyber attack occurred at a particular city, we have a detective, not one of yours. But the department maintains a member on this, the FBI Cyber Crimes Task Force. And we maintain, we have our own robust IT department that creates apps and does these things for our internal things. But we have detectives in that world. We have a, there's a, there's a bunch of, of aspects to it. There's the Computer Crimes Against Children unit. There's this, a lot of it's task force oriented. So because there's not really jurisdictional boundaries followed by, by that. And so sometimes we're paired up with the FBI and us and others and we just put somebody on the.
So that's kind of like a, a service that comes with having the contract.
You got a lot of little things that you could never quite put in the contract. But that city that had an attack, I sent detectives from downtown that are, that I, that we employ, that I supervise from the Cyber Crimes Task Force to go up and the FBI as well and to go help that city with their IT people and see if we couldn't offer. Now, it was more of an advisory role and if there's a criminal investigation piece.
Okay.
But you, you know, we could do an hour on all the little things that aren't necessarily here, but they're available. And we bring them out every time those, you know, little niches occur, little things that maybe once a year. We've got somebody who does that all day, but they do it countywide for a million people. And it's really, uh, it's the most cost-effective way for you to have, you know, an expert in child abuse to have somebody that you share with nine cities. Actually, it's not one person, it's a team, but they, and that's all they do. And they could be in the county, they could be in the city. Some of the services we don't include in the cost of the contract, they're free. Because we offer them to other city, other agencies. So certain things like the helicopters and the SWAT team and the bomb squad, some of those are funded by Prop 172 and they're regional assets. And so the helicopter flying overhead of Vista could go to Escondido if they had a higher priority. Because no, the contract cities aren't necessarily paying for that. But we have a lot of investigative units from homicide to child abuse and Cyber Crimes Task Force, all these things that exist. And you really don't, you know, you're paying for one finger of their body, not their whole body. And it would be overkill to buy yourself one of those. So we'll all share one. And when we need that expertise, it's there.
All right, awesome. I, I have a few more questions.
If I could jump in, we have a time certain redistricting public hearing at 6:00 PM. So what I would recommend is we take the redistricting public hearing and then we can resume the conversation on C4, if that's okay.
Sounds good because I still got like two more questions, so.
Okay, so then we'll go to our public hearing. We have the one public hearing this evening. It's to consider city council redistricting. So the public hearing is now open. Our City Attorney, Piper, Piper will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this evening, we welcome Kay Vincent from our demographers who will provide the presentation on the maps that have been submitted. And potentially the council will elect to adopt a map this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and staff. National Demographics Corporation, also known as NDC, is happy to be here this evening for the city's third redistricting hearing and fifth meeting for potential map adoption. As you may recall, NDC assisted the city with formation of their initial districts now nearly five years ago. This is a map of the current districts, including a small annexation. Some of the information is a review, plus there are five draft maps, although one is not contiguous and can't be adopted, that we'll be looking at. Following the federal decennial census, the city is required to adopt new district boundaries substantially equal in population. The California Fair Maps Act establishes procedures and criteria to accomplish the redistricting process. Due to the pandemic, the process was delayed. The city council is required to hold four public hearings, one of which may be a community workshop. The initial public hearing was held December 14th. In an effort to reach out to the community, the second meeting was a workshop on Saturday afternoon, January 15th. These meetings were held prior to release of draft maps for the purpose of education to obtain input on communities in the districts and to provide information on how the public may submit their own maps. The second public hearing or the third meeting was held February 8th and draft maps were considered. Public input was sought on factors to consider in drawing district maps and to discuss, seek input and revise the draft map. An extra community workshop or the fourth meeting was held on February 23rd next door in the community room. Draft maps were posted on the city's website on March 1st. This evening is the third public hearing and fifth meeting. Following discussion of the draft maps, it is anticipated the city council will consider adopting the recommended final map. There are both federal and state laws that govern how redistricting is accomplished. These have been covered at each of the previous hearings, so I'll summarize. The left column shows the federal laws. Each district is required to be equal in population within a 10% deviation. The Federal Voting Rights Act prohibits minority vote dilution of a protected class based on race or minority language. And also there can be no racial gary mandering. Race is a factor, but it cannot be the only factor. The right column reflects state law. In addition to the process discussed on the previous slide, with the number of meetings, this rank criteria must be followed in order of priority. Each district must be geographically contiguous. The neighborhoods and communities are to be considered. And those are areas that share common interests, views and values. And the third criteria is that they should have easily identifiable boundaries and they need to be compact. And another prohibition relates to not favoring or discriminating against a political party. This is a map of the current districts and accompanying demographic summary from the 2020 census. As mentioned at the last hearing, besides meeting all required criteria for districting, the chosen map was selected in part so each district would contain a portion of the downtown village. The total population of the city of Vista is 98,714. So each of the four districts must contain about 24,679 people. As you can see, the total deviation between the least populated district and the most populated district is 12.4%. And that was the difference or spread between District 3 and District 4. And that's more than the 10% deviation allowed. So the districts need to be adjusted. According to law, the districts are divided based on total population, all residents, not just voters. Based on total population, there is Hispanic Latino majority in District, District 1 and population and pluralities in Districts 2 and 3. But the next bar, citizen voting age population are citizens and those 18 years of age or older, basically those that are eligible to register to vote, which is entitled, which is utilized for the purpose of the Voting Rights Act. The majority populations are unchanged and District 1 was 60% Hispanic, but the pluralities do change. Relative to the other protected classes, there's no geographic concentration of black with a total of 4% or Asian Americans with 5%. And this is the current map, complete demographics. And as you know, at a previous hearing, we covered some of the other information that's included in these demographics, including education, income and housing. Slide 6 is public map 101. It's a minimal change from the current map and the total population deviation is 2.98%. Relative to total population, District 1 has a Hispanic Latino majority and there are pluralities in Districts 2 and 3. Then on the bar with the citizen voting age population, District 1 retains a majority of Hispanic Latino voters at 62%. This is public map 102 and it's a revision to public 101. By removing a triangle from District 2 and adding it to District 1. And that triangle is bordered by Vista Village Drive, South Santa Fe Avenue and Civic Center Drive. It contains about 1,344 people. Another area with 1,206 people was moved from District 1 to District 2. The total deviation is 2.37%. For total population, District 1 has a Hispanic Latino majority and pluralities in Districts 2 and 3. And in the citizen voting age population category, District 1 has a majority of Hispanic Latinos at 62%. And this is the complete demographics for that public map 102. And this is a visual comparison between 1 and 2, and that's from the same submitter. And the intent stated was that 102 replaced public map 101. This is public map 103. And the submitter indicated the goal of the map is to keep communities together that identify as a unit, taking into account major roads, parks, zoning, housing types and transit. But District 3 is not contiguous, so you can see how it's split. And that was the number one redistricting criteria. So this map couldn't be adopted. The most northwestern census block is the issue and it contains 2,842 people. A revision has been submitted and we'll look at that next. And this is it, public map 103B. And it was because 103 was not contiguous. This, the revision keeps the population unit ID number 2 in District 1 and moved ID number 44 to District 3. The total deviation is 9.36%. Regarding total population, there is a Hispanic Latino majority in District 1 with 70.9% and pluralities in Districts 2 and 3. For citizen voting age population, there is Hispanic Latino majority in District 1 with 58% and a plurality in District 3. And this is the complete demographics for public map 103B. This is a visual comparison of the two maps. You can just see where the differences were. That northwest corner and next to it, that pink upside down triangle, there's a difference there. But 103, as we stated, is not contiguous and couldn't be adopted. But these are from the same submitter. And this is NDC map 203. It's a, a minimal change map.
What's the label of that map?
NDC 201 is a minimal change map. The total population is balanced with 6.45% deviation. Based on the need to balance population and a comment at the first workshop, some retail is taken from District 3 and added to District 4. And I think you can see between the red dashed lines and the colors between the green and purple that change. For total population, there is 72% Hispanic Latinos in District 1 with pluralities in Districts 2 and 3. For the citizen voting age population, there is 60% Hispanic Latinos in District 1. And this is the complete demographics for that 201 map. This is a visual comparison of all the maps. The next slide only shows three because I believe it was the submitter's intent to replace 101 with 102. And 103 is not to be adopted. So that leaves you with a visual comparison of these three maps, 102, 103B and 201. So this evening is the public hearing to receive public comment and have board discussion about what's the preferred map and why? Why does it comply with the Fair Maps Act? And then perhaps have city council action to adopt the district map. The election sequence is not really a factor. It's unchanged per the city's municipal code. So the next election would be November 8th, 2022 for Districts 1, 4 and the, and the mayor. And then in 2024 for Districts 2 and 3. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer questions.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Do we have any public speaking?
No.
Okay, I've reviewed all the maps that have been submitted by the public as well as the map that was drawn by NDC. And I have to say that the map that NDC drew is very simple. It changes simply one line, which is it takes District 4 from Sunset to Melrose. And this would move a minimum number of city residents from the district number that they're now in and provide a sort of a continuity. And it's also of the presentations of the multiple, the three maps, it's the most compact, which is one of the goals of the state redistricting law. And I think that we want to honor here as well. We know that it complies with all of the guidelines of the law. It was drawn by our consultants in a nonpartisan, unbiased way. For that reason, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing and adopt map labeled NDC 201.
Councilmember Contreras.
I want to thank the public for the participation. It's always good to have more qualifying maps. And I'm really proud of the job that the public has done, these maps. I actually don't have an issue with any of these maps that made it to the qualifying round. I think that they all have merit. So I, you know, I, in looking at the NDC map 201, I do agree with Deputy Mayor Franklin that it is more compact and it has less changes in the boundaries. However, the deviation in population is a little bit higher on the 201 map. So let me see here. Yeah, so we have a, a deviation of 6.45 for map 201. Map 101 has a deviation of 2.98, 102, 2.37. And let me just look at, and then public 103 has a larger deviation, 9.15. Yeah, like I said, I just don't, I, I can see the merit in every single one of these maps. I think that, um, you know, there's maybe different reasons for some of the shifts. But I would like to hear what my colleagues have to say. I, I'm really just very happy that we had public participation to this extent. Because I, I know this could be a difficult process, trying to balance all the objectives to make a qualifying map is not the easiest thing. So I really appreciate everybody's participation. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we were part of the first districts ever and we did all those workshops and things and broke it down into four districts. And I really also appreciate all the public participation. I think that the communication from the city and technology integration has really made it a lot easier for the public to participate and come up with some really good maps. My, one of the big things that I really wanted to stress in these districts was kind of everybody having a piece of downtown. And when we did the initial, you know, study, when we broke it up, that's kind of how we, you know, broke it down. And NDC's map really doesn't switch that at all. It just kind of takes a little shift out of it. I know that the population deviation is a, you know, a little bit higher than the other ones. But after putting all the time into the initial maps and just seeing what the, you know, the others options are per se and us not all having a stake in that particular area that I think we should all have a stake in moving forward. I would like to second Councilmember Franklin's motion as presented. And also, once again, just thank the public for all their work and also our NDC consultant for all the work that she did as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you. I am very pleased with the, the map from NDC. I think that it is the most condensed and, you know, appropriate for the population change. I just wanted to make a, a comment about what is occurring as we're doing this redistricting process. Something that we're seeing on this, these maps is that District 1 and District 3, which are, you know, commonly known as being a little bit more dense, having higher density housing, more apartments, that kind of thing, that they have become more dense. Meanwhile, Districts 2 and Meanwhile, Districts Two and Four that have, include specific plans, that have more single-family zoning, those districts are becoming larger. So one of the concerns that I have, you know, looking long-term at the equity within our community, which is part of the purpose of having districts, is when we're considering our zoning and our land uses, that also is going to have an impact on our districts. So an area of our community, such as District Four, you know, that's being shown in this 201 NDC map, that is, you know, a larger area, right, than District Three, for example. And the way that it can be justified to take up more of that space is because the population is the same. However, you know, over time, we could see a detriment to this reality where the same amount of population has a greater say in a large amount, a larger amount of space. So just in our ongoing conversations about equity, about zoning and land use, it's important to remember that our actions as a, as a leadership body and as a city are ultimately going to have an impact on our, the empowerment of voters, right? So the more dense a district is, the less land that those citizens really have a say and stake in. And the less dense an area is, you know, they kind of have more land to speak for despite having, you know, as close to the same amount of citizens and residents as possible. So that's just one of my observations is, you know, with differences in the zoning between each district, we are seeing that, you know, the more denser areas are going to get smaller, and the less dense areas are going to be able to take up more space. And I appreciate Councilmember Green's, you know, comments and reflection that it is important for each district to have a little bit of a stake in downtown. And, you know, over time, because of our zoning and our land use, it may be harder and harder to do that. So that's just one of my reflections. But all in all, I really appreciate this process. It was really cool to see people submit maps and then adjust them and be able to, you know, be part of the process. I agree. I think 201 is the most condensed and appropriate map at this time, but it does cause me to reflect a little bit on, you know, the consequences of our zoning. And that impacts more than just our housing and our, you know, how we arrange our city. It also is going to impact the power that the voters have ultimately at the end of the day. So I appreciate all the discussion and the public for submitting maps, and I am happy to go to vote on this item. Thank you.
Okay, see no further discussion. I will call for the vote. That motion passes unanimously. So that takes us back, I think we go back, right? Go back to the law enforcement services agreement. And then, so pressure buttons again, those of you who wanted to. I think we're on still Councilmember Contreras.
I just wanted to say thank you again to our NDC consultant. We appreciate your work.
Yes, thank you for all the workshops and all the information you brought to us. Thank you.
He's just grabbing a reference.
I promise I have like two more questions. In looking at the reserve program, it simply states, "The sheriff, in partnership with the city, will take active steps to recruit individuals to participate in the reserve program." And I wanted to know, are there any statistics, metrics on this reserve program? What does it mean? What does it look like? Can the city be a better partner? What kind of impact does this eventually have on lowering the cost of our contract? I don't know if you could speak to some of those.
I can speak to what's going on the last 20 or 30 years with the reserve program. It is becoming less and less popular over the years. There were changes about a decade ago made by the state requiring everything required of a full-time peace officer of a reserve. The amount of training was, ended up being the same essentially. It used to be a little bit lesser, and then they could ride along, and there was, there were layers, there was level one through four. But now it's gotten to where they could basically be a paid police officer. They have to have that level of training and maintain it in order to be a reserve. So those numbers have dwindled. The areas that have increased, our search and rescue has increased dramatically. We have a very robust unit of search and rescue because they're not handling firearms, they're not using force. So as the last 20 years have seen more and more liability, more and more requirements, the state probably, I mean, just in the last year, I probably had to read 20 or 30 new things that we have to do and follow and mandated training and this and that. Eventually, for somebody who's a volunteer and wants to do it one day a week or two days a month, they can barely get out of the training before they get to the, being a reserve. When I was here 25 years ago running around in patrol, with 15, 20 reserves, we might have two. It's, it's none, none. I mean, there might be one here, there. So it's not a robust unit because the requirements, the regulations have been, have essentially put it out of business. They're a handful, and they're wonderful people, and they have, may have a career. They may enjoy this, but their, their day job is something else that they, maybe it's more profitable and it's, they don't want to do this full-time. In a simpler time, there was a lot more of them because it didn't require as much. Search and rescue, because you're not, there's no weapons, very robust, wonderful group. We have an off-road group, a lot of what they're going to, it's a separate group. We have a bunch of, a variety of volunteer antelope groups, and they're, they're not dedicated to one city, but many people live here. But they're centralized, so they might find, we get a missing person in Vista, let's say they're on the far north end and it's a rugged rural terrain. We've got people who have the type of search dogs, and these are volunteers. We pay for, you know, their training and some of their things, but most of them are doing it just because they enjoy doing it. And they will go to remote areas, and they'll spend days. Mostly, they look for missing people is a big thing, and they're good at it. And they get the call or the page, and they leave their job or whatever, and away they go. Now, all 70 of them or 50 of them might not be able to come, but we're going to get a good grouping based on when it is. And they'll wear an orange shirt, it looks like a sheriff uniform, but in orange. The senior volunteers will wear a white shirt, and we actually have other volunteer positions that exist. You brought up the bilingual. We have volunteer translators, they get to ride along, but their role is different. They're not allowed to, you know, interact with the person until it's deemed safe. So we have a lot, we try to, anywhere we can fold volunteers into, I spoke at a luncheon today through a group. I mean, we want to try to bring them along. As far as what the city can do, I don't think you can change that because it was the state that kind of, and it's a risky thing to have a volunteer maybe that's not regularly trained and doesn't have, you know, in today's world, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I just didn't know anything about the reserve program, so it's good to, to have that information. There are so many other questions that I can ask, and I know that this is simply the contract and that we're getting actually a pretty good deal from the county as far as capping the runaway costs, right? So I, you know, and being fiscally prudent with our budget, there's one last category that I have a question on, and that's vehicles, because it's actually a pretty significant expense on a year-to-year basis. I'm looking at February 2022, and for vehicles, it's about $1.5 million. And I understand that, you know, just like with our engines and our ambulance, you know, we don't want to run them into the ground, we want to make sure that we are having proper maintenance and keeping them in service for an appropriate amount of time. I noticed that it's about 100,000 miles per vehicle as far as capping it and then saying, hey, you know what, it's time to retire that. But I'm not sure how quickly we get to 100,000 miles. What's the average?
So the way, the nice thing is you're in this basically, you know, agreement with all of the cities and the county. So your vehicle cost is set based on a rate we look at per year, and it's what the true cost is at the end of the year. We have a fleet manager that runs it. So we're not charging you per car that's sitting in the parking lot here or driving around. It's, you've got this many people, this many cars, and there's a certain dollar amount per unit based on what they do. Some of them share cars, some of them have a car just assigned to them, what kind of car is it? And we figure out the rate of what managing a thousand of these are, and then figure, and then divided by how many there are, what the costs are. It's all, all of the maintenance is done in-house. So the county garage charges us this amount for an oil change, tires, you know, get to this level. And all of those are looked at. Every one of these aspects is somebody who's probably, whole job is figuring out tires and getting a contract for the best deal, buying them in the thousands. So we get much better prices than smaller entities would. And fleet maintains, every time they get gas, it's digitally knows what car it is and then downloads the odometer and figures out the car communicates to the gas pumps, which communicates to the fleet manager, and they bring them in on, on a maintenance schedule. The cars in North County have their, a North County maintenance location, and they're all over the county. But we have people that track that, and that's the cost of the car. Built into that model was pre-chip crisis, so you're, if you revisited it, it would get worse. And it was our fleet prices that we've been able to use, but we also don't, when we build a contract like this, we're not going to build this one blip year. This is a five-year moving average of what it cost us to buy the cars, maintain the cars. And then if one city has a couple of cars crash, because we're self-insured, so, and another city has only one, and there's five over here, you don't have to hit that cost. It's going to be spread out amongst the cities and over the years. And in the end, it's the bill, it's like the, you know, we're all doing the same thing, but the bill's going to be divided exactly in proportion to how much of law enforcement you have. So from a department perspective, we buy a lot of cars. The contract cities are about a seventh of our operation, so, and only half of our patrol operations. So you're mixed into a larger group to get better deals, and we maintain those vehicles. We have explored other options. We're looking right now and testing in hybrids. We're struggling in a patrol vehicle setting for a plug-in because we don't, it doesn't get to rest. So it might be driven all day, and then that person goes home and somebody else gets into it all night. City mile, 100,000 miles in Vista, when you pretty much stayed in town, is 200,000 miles of a commuter, though. Because if you're only driving four miles between and starting and stopping and going two miles and three miles, 100,000 miles in Valley Center might, might be not so many calls. So it's going to vary, but we try to get as much out of the car as we can. There are sometimes when the cost of an individual car is not worth putting the money into, and there's an expert, our fleet manager, Kevin Dalton, makes those calls, and he's been doing this 30 years, and he started here at the Vista Garage. He knows everything about how to get every bit out of these cars. And then we, when we have one that's got a part problem, I've got 90 of them, I can, they'll change them around and get them, but they've got to be safe, they've got to get there, but we're going to get everything we can out of them. And we can't control how many Ford makes or what they're charging right now, but it's cost smooth over five years, and that number was done before that blip. Five years from now, whenever we negotiate another contract, this piece will be part of that five years, though.
Okay. Yeah, and just, you know, while we're talking about vehicles, I know in the past we've talked about deputies on bicycles, even in our downtown. And I was told that the, like, certification necessary, it could be actually a little bit difficult because that training's not always available. And I just wanted to see if there's an update on that. You know, we have e-bikes now, so I know I'm saving up to get one. But I'm curious because, you know, there's a, I don't know if there's a way to reduce, I mean, the vehicles are extremely important for many of the services that the deputies provide. However, they're really heavy, they use a lot of gas, they're running all the time. You know, is there a future where, you know, some of the patrolling would be done in a less armored vehicle, less heavy, a little bit more, I don't know, environmentally conscious?
We're going to get there, but the, the problem is, is that it's about the manufacturers. And the Crown Victoria was discontinued, and they stopped making it, they stopped making the Taurus. So we do try to use the same model of vehicle. It saves us on parts, buying in bulk, buying the equipment, the mechanics are able to work quickly because this is the ninth Ford Explorer they've worked on this morning, as opposed to lots of different models. We do have other models, we have the motorcycles, they're far more fuel-efficient, but they're limited. They don't, bicycles and motorcycles don't work well in the rain. They don't work very well at night. You know, less armored, you know, that's based on what we, I don't know what the future will look like. But currently, where those vehicles match our needs. Ford only makes a hybrid in the top-end model, and we don't, it doesn't pencil out to buy the Limited with leather interior right now. We're hoping next year we'll have some more options. Most of the carmakers have delayed their new models that we were anticipating using. We got some hybrids, we're testing them now, I think I've got four out there. And if it saves us, you know, 20% on gas, you know, spread across 1,000 vehicles, there's a bunch of money there to be saved.
Right, right.
But the market hasn't met us, and they've taken away a lot of our options because the public wasn't buying those things. So we do have limitations. When you put somebody in the back of a vehicle and you've got a cage there, you got to be able to fit most people in it and a small, you know, we've had some smaller cars, we've tried, and they just, there's no room for knees, and most people have them. So we got to do what we got to do. But I, I'm thinking the auto industry will change in the next two or three years, because a lot of models coming onboard, and maybe, and we'll adapt with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I know that on this council, we like to, you know, write letters to push and advocate sometimes, so, you know, the closer we can get to getting to more fuel-efficient vehicles, it's just, it's a huge cost, and I understand it's a necessary cost, but, yeah, I appreciate you going through some of the challenges.
A lot of the bosses and the detectives and the people that don't drive a black-and-white car will be moving towards the more fuel-efficient hybrid vehicles.
That's great.
As they become, as they become cost-effective. Some of them are, you know, such high demand right now from the public that we're not going to get those fleet deals, we're going that way. The problem with patrol is that there could be a fire in the next town, and we're going to go help, and the same is in the reverse is true, you know, or an event. So we do need to be able to get there and deal with less-than-ideal situations. So when people are running away, we have to run in. So those patrol cars will probably be later to the game, and, and when that, you know, that technology's a little bit cheaper, but.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes my questions, so I'll hand it over to my colleagues. Thanks.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions myself, mostly just these two. So I saw, you know, a list of roles, right? This is my first time ever encountering this document before, my first time since I was elected in 2020. But I saw, you know, the list of roles and the costs associated to the city, and I just had a, maybe it's a silly question, but I noticed that we have a traffic deputy, but we also have, it was listed a motor deputy. So I wasn't sure if those were different. So what are the activities of a traffic deputy, and how does that differ from a motor deputy?
So traffic deputy's in a vehicle, and they're, and a motor deputy's on a motorcycle.
Oh, I see, okay.
So a motorcycle officer is unable to arrest anyone or transport anybody, and their primary function is traffic enforcement, writing tickets. And when you're around a school or places of congestion, it's very difficult for a car to get seven cards ahead to pull that person over while there's kids running around. The motorcycle is a lot more nimble, and they can get to places, and they're much better for pulling people over. And you don't have, you won't have a lot of them, and they'll primarily work when schools are open. A lot of their time is spent in front of schools, they'll rotate around, we don't tell everybody what the schedule is, but we'll mix it up. And in areas where collisions have been occurring. And so they'll go there and do some speed enforcement with radar, and they can get two people quicker, especially in traffic. It's, and in the case of the traffic deputy, they can do tickets, they don't do quite as many. They'll deal with DUIs, and we'll have their hours staggered to later. We don't like the motorcycles out there after dark because it gets them hit, and they get injured more often at nighttime. And of course, they can't, they have to switch to a car during inclement weather, so they don't do well in rain, et cetera. You, most of your traffic are, how many do you have? You, most of your traffic or how many do you have? Seven, seven traffic. Now they're going to investigate all the collisions. They do the crash reports. What's really neat about, um, them is you'll probably have some of them that are trained in advanced collision investigation. So we have certain deputies are, uh, more skilled for fatal collision or serious injury one. And that is a crime scene reconstruction. There's a lot of schools involved, traffic has a couple of levels. So they're not really just out there writing tickets. They can and they will. But the DUI car is going to be usually go till, you know, two, three in the morning. It's going to be at nights and on weekends, those motorcycles are going to be out there generally ingress, egress, um, rush hour and school times. And your traffic deputies, you need to have coverage most of the time because anytime there's an accident, they're trained in, in accident investigation. And they carry a whole bunch of stuff. There's like measuring wheels and this and certain camera equipment. And they have laser stuff that sets up. I'm, I, I'm sorry that I don't know the technical terms because it's changed.
You explaining.
It used to just be tape measures and, and chalk, but it's advanced.
Right.
And so we've always had.
This is really good to know.
And they don't always have lights on top. And they, um, a traffic deputy can go to patrol calls when it's busy. But they, we leave them alone to deal with traffic stuff. And a patrol deputy can go to a traffic call, but it isn't their bread and butter. It's not what they do. And that bifurcation, when you incorporate, you're required to do traffic. In Fallbrook to the north, Highway Patrol handles all the crashes, we just do the patrol.
I see. Well, thank you so much for explaining the differences and I, I, many of my constituents had questions about. Being, you know, seeing, observably seeing that there are traffic violations, right? And what that enforcement looks like. And it sounds like there are a lot of roles, uh, that are, um. Our deputies are taking on, um, that are more than right, just monitoring those intersections. So being able to relay right back to my constituency that there's right, a whole, uh, breadth of responsibilities that come with those, right? Seven traffic deputies and it's good to know, right? The differences in those roles. It's also really good to hear that, um, those more community oriented and trauma informed forms, um, forms of care. Such as the crisis stabilization unit have, has been successful in that we're seeing that in real time. And that, uh, it, it is motive, you know, it's motivating to see that there's an interest in adapting to staffing needs. Based on what those needs are and those different areas, right? Um, and, you know, if there's an opportunity to, to get, um, some of our deputies on bicycles. I'm not opposed to that, but I do understand, I see how, um, those armored vehicles can be a little bit more adaptable. When you have to change your situation and go to a new location or what have you. So I appreciate understanding a little bit more about our, um, our traffic deputies versus the motor deputies. That's very helpful. But did you have anything more to add on that? I have one more question for you.
I was gonna say though, vehicles are not armored per se, just the, um, front door panel has some kevlar in it. It doesn't have significant weight. But we, we do have, um, when we use bicycles, which we've never done a permanent bicycle, it's for details. We're going to be at this festival is going to occur and it's just the best way to get around. And it is a lengthy, uh, training process. Went through it many years ago, the college has put it on. And the, and university, UCSD used to run that because they live in, that's kind of their, their way to get around campuses where it's not vehicle friendly. And they haven't really been in operation for a couple of years. So.
It might be hard to chase after someone speeding on a bicycle, for example.
You're not going to do that.
It'd be a little bit difficult.
But when you have a big community event or a pedestrian friendly or festival, it, it can be that, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, I see. That's a good example of what, how that can be utilized. So my second question was, um, perhaps our city manager could answer this. I saw that there was a description of, um, our city manager's ability to view, um, documentation and auditing process. So there wasn't too much described there, but I wanted to learn a little bit more about. What is our city's process and purpose when it comes to audits? And when was the last time an audit was conducted?
In my tenure, we have not done an audit with the sheriff's department. But I think as part of that question too, is if there's an incident or there's something that occurs that's Vista related. I have the ability, if, as long as the sheriff, uh, is comfortable with it, to, uh, see more pertinent details than maybe would be publicly released. To understand situations, to be able to relay information. But in terms of, uh, of an audit, we've not done an audit, uh, specifically for Vista.
Okay. I was just curious about that and.
We have lots of audits, don't worry. They happen to us regularly. I mean, there's a lot of different agencies that inspect and look into and different review boards. It's done regularly. It's not necessarily on a city basis, but, but as a department basis encompassing everything.
Right. I saw guidelines for our, our city manager's process. So I just wanted to see have we conducted any and it sounds like we have not. And I believe that's the end of my question. So thank you so much for your time.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you. First, I just want to say congratulations, uh, to, uh, Captain, uh, and soon to be formerly Commander White on your promotion. Congratulations. That's exciting. I have a, a couple of quick things. The helicopter, uh, oftentimes people are reaching out to us wanting to know what it's saying. And this is my experience. And I go outside and I hear them saying, stay inside, we're looking, they're armed and dangerous. And I'm going, well, I was inside, uh, with my shoes off, watching TV. Why are we not in 2022 utilizing a text messaging, uh, platform to send emergency information? If, if you don't mind breaking into my evening, uh, to fly over my house with a helicopter and a loudspeaker. I'm not going to complain to you about the text message.
So we have it and I'm just going to have to direct you to the website that tells you how to do it. And there's a nice video on how to operate it. You just text, uh, Telo or hello, and there's a, to a, to a particular number. And it will download what the helicopter is saying to you. And we have a public service announcement we recently put out and we will get that to you. And you can host or link that video on your website if you want. It's just a YouTube video.
I'm sure that dozens of people are enjoying that. But could we proactively obtain lists of citizens and get their cell phone numbers and.
No.
Reach, push those out to them?
So the.
I have the numbers, I could give them to you.
Is that it's a sem. So we have to, so when we push out, let's say a missing child or an abduction or an amber alert. And we send it out with, um, on a tower and we're going to broadcast it to everybody and wake them up with the, the emergency tone. The, the department doesn't control when those can be, what triggers that. And the helicopter looking for someone doesn't trigger that. Um, and that would hit every cell phone in a radius.
Right.
And the current, um, the current technology, because we're not at 5G yet. Means everybody in your neighborhood and probably all the way to La Jolla. It hits wide, you know, it's, we can get fourths of the county. We can broadcast them from a tower that if you enter into that area, it will text you. But, um, enabled to, in order to do what we call door and floor, or point something at it and just text those phones. That technology is not there yet and it's not because it's not there. The phones aren't there and the towers aren't there. And that's part of 5G, even though it says 5G on your phone, it's, we're not running that, it's not being run by the phone companies yet. We'll get there. It gets better all the time.
The technology is actually available on a consumer grade basis. It would just, I mean, it's, it's obviously, it's a different means than using an emergency alert, like an amber alert.
Yes.
Uh, which is going to everyone. You're going to miss some people, uh, with consumer grade. Cause the difference between the consumer and the emergency system is the emergency system is getting everybody based on the cell tower that they're on.
Yes.
Whereas the consumer, uh, one would look for a consumer data that's available publicly. And would get everybody that lives saying, you know, a certain zip code.
Well.
And you could just hit that zip code.
So we have new speakers on the, on some of the helicopters. They weren't, they weren't cheap, but I just tested one and my daughter called me and said. There's a helicopter over my house, what's going on? And her windows were closed and I could hear it perfectly. And I said, that's the new, that's the new speaker.
I just wanted to encourage you to look into that, that technology.
That's one, but we are going to look into that technology. We have plans mostly, it's because of fires, notifications and other things. We want to move as fast as we can with it.
Right.
Sometimes it's, um, it's the, uh, the rules behind what we're allowed to do. Cause some see it as an invasion of privacy broadcasting that stuff. So we'll get there.
I have that number because I use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I have right here. It's eight, five, eight, eight, six, six, four, three, five, six. And you text hello when it flies over your area and it's supposed to tell you what it is. But a lot of times it doesn't, it isn't, they don't update it quick enough, you know, it's flying over and I do that and it doesn't have anything to say. So then it's like annoying, but that, that's the, the number in the.
We're, we're trying to make efforts. We know that's one of the biggest complaints and it also overruns our comm center with people calling, saying, what's the helicopter doing? Or I didn't hear the, the missing person. If we have a missing person that goes on for five or 10 minutes, we'll get that updated. But if it's dynamic and a car, something just happened and they went down the street.
And that's where, yeah, there's a person missing that, you know, you try and hear that and then I, I think, well, I can't hear that. So then I try and call and then sometimes it, it won't answer.
But I, I hear you. I want to do it and we're moving as fast as we can on it. It's not a, we don't want to do it.
The technology in my business and I mean, I can, I can create areas in the city of Vista. And I can say, you know, here's a, a, a pre-built list for this geography. You know, I could name it sector one through eight and I could say, I want to text everybody in this sector. And I could do it inside of 20 minutes. I could have everybody receive a text message. And I would miss, you know, eighteen percent of the people in that sector, but, you know, the other would get it. So.
And we do it, we do it for some notifications.
Yeah.
To what our reverse nine one one, as we call it, but there's a little big push in, at least from the government, we get restricted. And they want people to opt in, not us to push it unless it hits one of these anchors.
Yeah. There's some technologies that are, that are compatible with a lot. I'll, I'll follow up with you on them.
Okay.
Something that came to mind during the discussion, uh, if the training is the issue for the reserve deputies, what about offering, uh, paid, uh, training? In other words, they would agree to do certain number of hours of reserve duty, uh, in exchange for receiving the pay for the training. But only the pay, only the training would be paid, only the training. And then they're going to volunteer and donate their time. That's a thought. You don't have to respond to it. But just think about it. That and we've been having a lot of conversations in the city of Vista about what's the appropriate level of policing. We went through a lot of years in the city of Vista. We built a lot of housing units here, many thousands of them. We didn't increase the number of deputies serving our population during that time. And there have been different things that we've heard about, you know, how many? And, uh, you know, oftentimes when I've tried to break down the number of deputies per thousand. Uh, I was using our census number, ninety-eight thousand, five hundred. And the number that we've been using is really one that's for, um. And I ask our city manager to obtain the population of the service area for Vista. Because you're policing a service area and I'd like to have a map of that service area. So that we can understand the population, because only then by understanding the population, can I break the number of deputies serving that area and kind of understand the ratio. But also I'd like to have your feedback and you don't have to give it here, uh, unless you have some, some top level thoughts. But, uh, in talking with some of the deputies, they've said you need to look further and we've had community members. And I, and I, I love to look at things from all different kinds of ways. What are the metrics that we should be concerned with? I mean, the, uh, you know, the one per thousand, so to speak, was the standard. When you started your career in, uh, in policing, uh, I think, you know, the FBI and national, uh, criminal justice, uh, experts have gone away from that. But, you know, some cities have as many as two per thousand. Some like us have, you know, probably closer to point eight, five per thousand. So, you know, I'm an advocate for more policing because I think it makes a difference. Uh, I'm also an advocate because I think when our deputies have a few less calls to go to. Have more time to engage in a positive interaction with the public, uh, on the calls that they're on and build that rapport. And I, I really want, uh, deputies to have the time to, uh, make friends and, and win converts, uh, in the community. Uh, so that the community is happier, deputies are happier. I think that's a really, uh, important goal that we should emphasize. So if you have thoughts about how we do that, and if you've done studies in other contract cities. I'd love to see all the contract cities sort of compared.
So we, it's hard to compare contract cities like a four thousand person town and a six, and a, and a hundred thousand person town. I would, um, just give you, since I've studied this in a hundred different ways, we're not, we don't publish studies, but we analyze, okay, how many, how much free time? How much discretionary time does a deputy have? An overworked deputy, maybe not the friendliest deputy. If a deputy has seven minutes every 12 hours to do discretionary things, they're not going to get a lot done. Is this deputy have half their day to, to do, to get out of the car and talk to people or go to this or go to that? It's hard because in a given seven day week and 24 hours a day, there's fluctuations anyways. We, what we've done a lot of times is we will bifurcate a unit, the community oriented policing team. And they're just going to do that, kind of like the traffic units are just going to do that. So it doesn't fall into the prioritization of what's going on because it will always be too low. This is your job. You do this.
I concern myself with that model.
Yeah.
The model that says that, uh, you know, thirty-eight deputies are going to not have time to build rapport. And they're going to be the ones that are, that are busy and therefore, you know.
Well, it's hard, it's hard too because they might, they might have more time on a Tuesday than they do on a Friday. And they might have totally a lot of free time between three and five AM, but they can't put that to use with the community. So some of it is staffing models. We're trying to staff to the calls. We would love to have everybody have extra time all the time to do, to do sort of the intangibles. To give you a number, it's usually the captain who's studying it and pouring over the amount of calls, the calls per deputy, how much time they were free in between calls. Or did they just go call to call and when did that stop? You know, and that's where your captain and your new captain will do that, will give you their opinion. Based on their 20 or 30 years of experience and studying just your city. Because I ran San Marcos and it's a different place and it has, runs in different cycles. And the university can cause cycles to change in that calendar. So, and the, the coast, another thing, I ran a city, uh, I, I ran Imperial Beach as a lieutenant. Totally different cycle. The weather could change that workflow. Um, and we can't send them away during December when there's not as much to do. You know, but they're, and it's hard to ramp up and hire, you know, you can't have part-time deputies show up in the summer when we're busy. We'll, we'll put overtime on those days, we'll add people to those day, pay people to come off to augment so that we're not overrun during those times. But I would defer, I would say watch out for that one to one thousand, uh, model. I brought the Sandeg, um, page on cost per resident, which is the only valuable page in the, in the annual study they put out. That says how much, um, each city pays for law enforcement per resident. Cause it's the way to apples to apples. If you did take out the micro cities. It, um, uh, because it's difficult to have less than one or two people. But, you know, Vista ranks in one of the two or three lowest cost per residents and the sheriff's contract cities have the lowest cost per resident. Where the city of San Diego might be thirty percent higher per resident. And your neighbors in Carlsbad Oceanside, and they could cost thirty percent more per resident to police. But those, that's an okay comparison number. But deputies or officers to resident is not a, is not a correct number to compare, at least in the data that comes out. Because of the way contract cities work. So if I'm Carlsbad police and I know I'm writing paychecks to a hundred people, then I have a hundred people to my seventy thousand residents. And you could look at your sheriff's contract and say, I have ninety-two people, so it's less than one to one thousand. But Carlsbad is including their internal affairs investigators, their recruiters, their, um, the person supervising the communication center. The watch commander, they're, they've got all this answer, you know, the recruiters and background investigators and we can go on and on and on. And when we count the number for Vista, we're not including those. That's just what you have. And you have all those other things working, they're just not here, you're sharing. So there's a watch commander 24/7, that's a lieutenant at the communication center that's overseeing everything. 24/7 and watching every pursuit, just so that in the middle of the night or the weekends, there, we've got somebody of rank on duty. We don't count that into your number or anybody else's, but a city police does count that person. They do count the internal affairs person. They do count the, the person that runs training. Our academy staff is not counted into those numbers. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of numbers that aren't necessarily attached to the city. When Sandag comes out and says point eight per thousand. And then it's also where are you at? I mean, Philadelphia will have five SROs at a high school and it's not enough. Or they'll have five police officers to, per one thousand residents. And we're doing it at one or sub one and their crime rates are four times higher than ours. So I have a hard time getting outside of the region and comparing because they're different places, they operate differently, they're different communities. Does Vista has more police than it had when I was working? When you look at the service area, yes, we patrol the unincorporated areas that surround Vista. But that's not counted into your number and that's not billed to you. We add county deputies to that, um, to handle that. And there is crossover, county deputy will help and vice versa, because it's not a, it's not a ton. In San Marcos, it was the same thing. We had about thirty thousand unincorporated. So we were putting out unincorporated, then incorporated deputies. The lake in San Marcos was an island in the middle. Yes. Do they cover each other? Do they share? If it's an emerg- Yes, do they cover each other? Do they share? If it's an emergency call and someone's being attacked, it doesn't matter who's, what your assignment is, we're going. And so I think see that as a benefit. Do you want to add more patrol officers or add more specialized? That's up to you. And I think you should take the advice of your captain or consult with them about what the proper service level is. And that's a debate for for you. If you are, the reason we put that stuff about there are minimums is you can't just say, you know, we're just going to have one and we're done. No, we can't be unreasonable. But you can decide to shift and the different cities have those options to sort of add. The contract doesn't bind you to any number. So if you want to add some, by all means, it's we'll we'll do what we can to provide them.
At the same time, there need to be some metrics and frankly, yes, Vista is different than San Marcos, which is different than Poway, which is different than Imperial Beach, there's no question. A lot of big differences. However, there are ways to benchmark data.
We can do it for you.
And and we need to be able to have some benchmarks because to put the captain in the position of having to make a political decision of do I go with this side that wants more, this side that wants less, or wants to stay the same? It it puts somebody in a tough spot to say it's a political decision and, you know, but at the same time, go with them. It's, we we need, we need, we need good data as decision makers to to make that political decision, because it is a political decision. We need really good data to make that political decision.
And and your captains have access to a variety. It's not necessarily put in an executive summary for political decisions. It's the, it's it's more granular and they'll explain some of the anomalies, but they can, they should be communicating with you and communicate with Patrick and they can provide their recommendations where they think they see a gap or a need or an increase or where something will help. My perspective is is spread across a lot of years and so I see, you know.
The sense I get is, and what I'm told, I'm told Vista is the busiest patrol station in the county.
At one time it was, but Rancho, San Diego and Vista are probably more on par. They're our two largest. But yeah, it's.
Either first or second, but point is, we're we're very busy. You know, and I'm I'm curious, like, what are our calls per deputies? What are our arrests? What are our bookings per deputy? What are the reports per deputy? Because some of those things also help us understand how our deputies are using their time. I mean, obviously if they're booking a lot more people in the jail, that's going to consume a lot more of their time and reduce the, so anyway, I I've taken enough time.
We can get that data though for you.
But yeah, that's it's really important. It's a debate that we've been having and it's information that we need and the community wants it and so appreciate it.
And I missed one thing on the helicopter. We're going to put our CAD online to the public.
You're going to put what online?
Uh, it's called the computer aided dispatch. We're going to make that publicly available because we've been forced by the state to eliminate scanners. We've had to encrypt our thing because of personal, personal identifying information that might be broadcast on the rare area. So we we have a, we've got a prototype. It has to be able to automatically strip out that PII out as it moves from, you know, the person that called, their phone number, all that. And put it on, if you've seen CHP CAD, I use it, it's better than any other traffic app because it will let you look at the incident and I can read into what it is. There will be some coded speech and numbers used, but you'd be able to actually look at the calls kind of live minus personal information like the names and who called and stuff like that, that might. And then there'll be some calls pulled out of there where it might get sensitive, certain calls maybe.
One final thought for city manager and I appreciate the captain and the department pulling together a new attachment B. You know, and one of the things we we've talked about here and we went around when we had this discussion of, well, exactly what is the number? We have a number that we pay for to service the boundaries of the city of Vista. That number on the new schedule B is a setup because I just got this, is it set up to 84 and change?
I have 85 and a half.
Eighty-five and a half, okay. And then we've got a number that we're now at, what is it, 92, 93, 94 for the entire station?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. So when we talk about those two numbers, it's important to keep, you know, one of them is for the city of Vista, the other is for a larger territorial battery with a larger number of inhabitants.
And and there's some in there that aren't that you aren't direct billed for juvenile diversion officer, the captain, the two lieutenants, because they have some duties. He oversees Fallbrook as well, so we don't direct bill for him. You pay a portion. And that's in your ancillary. So there's more bodies than sometimes that you're you're paying 100% of those bodies. Your ancillary covers some more bodies that are actually at the building.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown and Captain White, Joe Green. I just liked that there were three colors in the council chamber at the same time. That's a big deal. You did say something that kind of caught my attention and you said that contract cities are only 7.7% of your of your.
Of the department's budget.
Of, yeah, for like the county of.
A seven.
A seven.
For the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department.
Okay, okay, okay. A seventh makes more sense. I thought you said 7.7% and I'm like, dang, that's crazy. Okay, so cool, a seventh of the department's budget, which still means that six sevenths are funded and paid for by the county. And contract cities get the benefit of the savings, even though we're kind of the little guy in that pie per se.
It's not little in the patrol.
Yeah, don't judge it. Don't call us little. I'm not asking for you to justify my comment because we're huge in Vista. I understand though.
I've been asked, you know, how can you do this number? What if the pay rate is higher or whatever?
Of course.
County's not going to use the contract as a basis for labor negotiations like you would for a fire department, where you pay the whole bill.
Okay.
Because the other seven out of eight deputies don't work in the contract city world. They work in jails and courts and, you know, all these other places where a large organization is a portion of what we do.
So as a city, we don't have a whole bunch of like, you know, negotiating power. We basically.
Valuable thing to.
We know that we are. I appreciate you. That's on the record. Yes, Mr. Brown stated, we are the most valuable thing to the San Diego County Sheriff's Department.
We care about our contract cities. We want to keep all of them. We want to keep them all happy.
Good.
And 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 if a couple of them were to leave, that we would lose that sort of a volume, which might drive costs up for the rest. So that's why we like that. We love that this contract might spur some additional officers out there and the more contract cities buy, the lower the costs are overall.
Awesome. I'll tell you what, since I was elected in 2016, the community engagement that you guys have made, I mean, body cams are on now. Captains are more engaged with communities. We got the tunnel of kindness, the coffee with the captain. I mean, you name it. When it comes to Vista, we're really trying to bring your sheriff's department more into a community oriented policing, you know, type of perception from a community standpoint. So hearing that you're shifting funding to social workers and you got other stuff going on for the community and our whole package gives us such good wraparound service, that's really good news. The one thing that I wanted to do was give a shout out to my man Lanny and my man Noel. We go to the Kiwanis Club every Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM. I did the state of the city there last week, based off the mayor's notes. And they were so upset that they were down to 13 volunteers because they used to have more and they wondered, you know, when are we going to get the breakfast with the awards and where's the recognition? And I'm sure you've heard it from your volunteers as well. And it did have a lot to do with COVID and I sat down right in front of Patrick. I'm like, what are we doing? And he's like, we're putting a big social media campaign. The banner is actually already up over Vista Village Drive. So when you drive through, when I saw it, I was like, yes, sir. Hopefully Lanny saw it. And in our Kiwanis newsletter, we're putting a big push out. We have a lot of senior citizens in our Kiwanis, if you could believe that. I am a very young man, which is why I show up to Kiwanis. But we are putting all of that information in there with all of the, you know, outreach that the city is doing because that's something they really like. They do it two to three times a week, I want to say. They're always driving around and, you know, the volunteer sheriff's department is a big part of their lives. So they're looking forward to that camaraderie coming back. They're looking forward to another volunteer awards breakfast. I don't, did you even get to do a volunteer awards breakfast? But you get, yeah, so we love those. They're cool. So thank you so much. You're the one who helped invent that program for our community.
I was just a deputy that said you're in charge.
Deputy who was in charge. Well, good job deputy in charge helping grow it because it is huge and I just want to let you know that it does mean a lot to the senior citizens in our community and it's a really big part of their culture and, you know, their friends and their families. So thank you so much for bringing that back and thank you, Patrick, for doing a bunch of recruitment for those volunteers because I'm looking forward to some bacon and eggs with those people. So thank you guys so much for all the information. This is item C4, which is on our consent calendar and it's 709. So as you see, it was very important to us, to our city and to our council. So thank you so much for your time, sir. With that, I would like to move to approve this item of the consent calendar as presented.
I second that.
Councilmember Contreras, what?
I really appreciate the time that we've had to discuss and kind of go through the contract. A lot of times, you know, things on consent calendar is just kind of like a split second and it's gone. So I thought it was really important for us to dig in. You know, I have some constituents that might not be happy, you know, with certain incidents and and I understand. And I'm thankful that we're moving in a different direction. But, you know, having the ability to communicate in a bilingual fashion is going to be huge. So I really look forward, you know, I know Captain White, you know, worked closely with Jovita Serafine, who is the team captain for Guerreras, who they do a weekly pickup and on KPBS for their actions. So I really appreciate the community involvement. It needs to continue. We need to be able to kind of close the gap in communication between our residents and the sheriff's department. And I do want to say that I am also looking forward to the expansion of PERT and Crisis Mobilization, Mobile Crisis Stabilization Unit, because anything that can, one, address some of these issues that we have in our community with residents who are having behavioral health crisis or whatever the case might be, it's important to have these parallel social services. We can't depend on our sheriff's deputies to be able to plug all these gaps in our society. So, you know, hopefully in the future, that also relieves our deputies from having, you know, no time between calls. So all this kind of works in conjunction. And I do want to say, just for everybody to know, because this is not something that I've reported from North County Transit District, but North County Transit District did enter into a contract with the sheriff's deputies to have a substation at the transit center. So I just want to put that on the radar because moving forward, right? When we're looking at the deputies that we specifically hire versus the amount of deputies that are playing a role in preventing crime and addressing different issues that we have. You know, that's the deputies that are going to be stationed at North County Transit District. You know, that's going to also address some of the issues that we have. But other than that, I I really appreciate the time that we've taken and I look forward to the vote.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously and it takes us to our last consent item. It was C13, right? Councilmember Contreras, C13. Did you want a report on that? That was on our agenda last time, actually, our last.
I forgot that we were going back to that. I don't need a report, however, I will not. I I wanted to vote separate on this issue because I will not be voting in favor of this.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Make a motion to approve item C13.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes three to two. There goes Councilmember Green. You got to come back, Joe. Okay, we have one discussion item this evening. We can move on out of our consent calendar to our discussion items. It's fiscal year 2021-22, second quarter financial report and our finance director, Mike Sylvia, will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, item D1 is our fiscal year 21-22 second quarter financial report, which provides a summary and comparison of the general fund budget to actual results. And also includes proposed operating budget adjustments for the second quarter. And then in addition to that, we have additional annual revenue estimates of $5.3 million and staff recommended appropriations, utilization of those additions as requested by city council during the November 9th city council meeting. The general fund revenues and expenditures are consistent budgetary expectations for the second quarter. However, did want to mention the current year revenues actuals are a bit higher than last year with the largest nominal increase being related to moonlight operations because it was largely shuttered last year. The deviation there is $2.5 million. But that being said, there are still significant amounts of cash receipts that aren't received evenly throughout the year. So we wouldn't expect to be at 50% at this time. Revenue wise, we're at 38.4% through December 31st and expenses, we are at 39.9. Both of those are in line with prior year trends. Specific to the council requested additional analysis of revenues and expenditures, the additional revenues of 5.3 have been identified from five sources. 2.6 million from sales and use tax, 1.4 million from prop L sales and use tax, 715,000 from transient occupancy tax, 400,000 from business license and 218,000 from real property transfer taxes. Staff recommends allocating the additional revenues to 16 budget amendments, which include 1.5 million for the Public Works lay down yard improvements. 1.4 million would be transferred directly to prop L reserves for the overage in the prop L sales tax collections. 600,000 to city work software review and reimplementation. 300,000 to the SDG and E lighting study, another 300,000 for IT security, business continuity and disaster recovery. And 290,000 for the community improvement team. I'll have a little bit more information on that one in just a minute. There are eight other budget adjustments requested and those are more the norm of what you all see in the quarterly financial reports. Among them are 7 million to fund the CalPERS additional discretionary payments, 3 million scheduled for this year, 4 million for next fiscal year and 2.2 million for additional pension trust funding. Both of the or all three of those items were discussed in detail during our February 1st pension workshop. And then 635,000 for the permanent local housing allocation or PLHA grant. I did want to mention there was a typo on the PLHA grant, one on page three and one on page 28. The second and third figures were transposed, but I wanted to state on the record and let everyone know that the archived documents will reflect the true amount for both the revenue and the allocation, which is 635,530. All of the 24 recommended budget adjustments are explained in detail in exhibit two on pages nine through 14 of the agenda report. In addition to the requested budget adjustments, there are three personnel related items. First is the addition of a code enforcement officer one position. The second is the reinstatement of the Director of Recreation and Community Service position from unfunded to funded status. Exhibit 11 provides detailed descriptions of these recommendations on page 32 of the agenda report. And exhibit 12 is the authorizing city council resolution on pages 33 through 36, along with the citywide classification and compensation index reflecting the recommendations. Lastly, a personnel related appropriation of $290,000 is requested for the creation of a community improvement team. This would be a two staff member team responsible for blight reduction and the removal of illegal dumping throughout the city. The appropriation includes the staffing costs as well as two vehicles and staff uniforms. With that, the recommendation for this item is to receive and file the fiscal year 21-22 second quarter financial report and adopt three resolutions, one for the city amending the operating budgets for fiscal 21-22 and 22-23. One for Buena Sanitation amending the operating budgets for fiscal 21-22 and 22-23. And the third item to authorize the amendment to the citywide classification and compensation index and repealing the provisions of any resolutions in conflict herewith. And with that, I'm available for your questions.
Councilmember Contreras, is that from last time or is that this time? This time, okay. You're up.
Thank you so much for this review. Wanted to get to, where did I just leave my, here we go. So just looking at exhibit two, number three, the community improvement team. I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but I do want to put a requirement that this be local hire here in people from the city of Vista that live here. I think that, you know, there's could be a direct correlation between the understanding of our city and some of the goals that we as council are representing that are reflected in the community. So I'm not exactly sure how my colleagues feel about that, but I, whether that. whether that creates too much of a constraint or not, but I do feel like this should be a, someone who has intimate knowledge of the city, because they're a resident of it. And I wanted to ask about the team. Do we have an idea of how many people would be part of this team?
It would be a two-member team.
Okay. And one of the individuals would be part of our Code Enforcement?
No, that's a separate request.
Okay, separate request, okay. Other than that, you know, I just want to highlight the SDG&E Lighting Study. You know, we allocated a significant amount of money to increasing our lighting, and this is going to make us more efficient and effective with placing lights throughout our city. So I'm really pleased to see that on there. You know, I brought up cybersecurity. This is on the list here on number seven. It looks like, you know, we're going to create a cybersecurity plan, which I think is definitely something worth putting funds towards. And I want to highlight that the senior center is going to have an AC replacement. So that's going to definitely improve that facility. But I would like to hear from my colleagues to see what they think about specifically number three, and part of that team being someone that is a resident of our city.
I would, I think that we should give priority maybe to someone from there, but I'd like to see the best qualified person that has the skills and things to do that job. So, and I don't have the, you know, whatever the definition of their job description will be. So, but I think, you know, if there's a person in Vista that qualifies, I would like to give them priority, but I wouldn't not to just say that have to be from Vista. So that's my thoughts. So I'll go to Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think, you know, we ought to provide a priority, and I think it's probably for the time being enough to just say it's a sense of the council that we prefer if two candidates are completely equal, and one of them resides in the city, I would agree, they should have a slight preference. But, yeah, I'm also with you. I, you know, that was one of the first things that I said when I got elected seven years ago, is, you know, wouldn't it be nice if everybody lived in Vista? And I still would like that. I really would. But I also understand that, you know, public service is an industry like any other, and we have to be competitive. Not all of our employees can afford to live here. And so we find the best and the brightest people to serve the people of Vista from all around the region. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the 2021-2022 Second Quarter Report and adopt council resolutions amending operating budget for fiscal years 21-22 and 22-23, and adopting Buena Sanitation District Resolution amending the operating budget for fiscal years 21-22, 22, and 23, and adopting council resolution amending the citywide classification and compensation index repealing the provisions of any resolutions in conflict herewith.
All of staff recommendations, right?
Yes, verbatim.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
That was amazing reading of staff recommendations, Deputy Mayor. If I could just give you props on that. Real quick, I actually had Community Improvement Team start, highlighted, circled, underlined as well. Similar to like a local bidder, you know, or local contract, local bidder preference, I would like to have the actual verbiage of we will do a local hire preference. In my opinion, the more local, the better, as far as if they're in Vista and they're qualified, that'd be great. And, but do it as, you know, local hire preference. They still have to be qualified, still have to meet our guidelines, but it makes total sense to have a Community Improvement Team. I mean, even if they live in, I guess, Rancho del Oro, that's still local. We'll call that West Vista, but local bidder preference. And I would say, for me, North County is local. Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, Carlsbad, kind of that area. And I would think maybe we could find two candidates in North County, local here. But, yeah, get them from Vista. The other thing was, is I started the SDG&E Lighting Study. When the public sees that we're spending $300,000 to do a study, as I was, we're like doing a study to put lights on. The lights are $1,000 apiece to put on a light pole. So I was like, man, instead of doing $300,000 study, let's just start putting 300 lights up. Want to make sure that the public knows I asked that question. And what's necessary is to do the study. In order for SDG&E to allow us to put the lights on their poles, we have to show them the feasibility study and why we need these lights here and what areas are poorly lit. So we allocated $1.353 million to put lights in, so we will still have over $1 million to put towards lights, which could translate to 1,000 new lights in the city of Vista. So I just wanted to throw all that out there on the record. And with that, I will be seconding Council, Deputy Mayor Franklin's amazing motion.
Mayor, if I could just jump in really quick and just let the council know that we don't have a residency requirement within our MOUs for VCA, which these jobs, once we bring them back to you for approval, would fall into. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's not to say we can't, you know, I understand a preference for hiring local, whether that's Vista, North County, but we do not have a residency requirement at this time.
Can we ask our, the VCA, like, how does that work?
Let me add that the California Constitution prohibits a residency requirement.
Councilmember Melendez.
I don't have too much to add. Thank you, Mr. Sylvia, for, you know, this presentation. And I do appreciate that recommendation. It sounds like we're not allowed to have a local preference.
You are not allowed to have a local requirement that the person be a resident of the city.
I see.
The Constitution doesn't speak to a preference, but you definitely cannot say we could only hire persons from the city. That's not permitted.
Well, I would be very amicable to having a local hire preference. I'm reading the description, right? So it says, "Staff recommends creating a Community Improvement Team to address issues of blight, as well as illegal dumping on private and public properties." I've seen this a lot, right? We see people littering, right, dumping, and I think that it would be highly beneficial to have someone who was local, because there's a buy-in, right? There's a greater sense of agency and connection to, not only do I live here and I'm invested in, you know, what my city looks like, but I can give back in the way that would be beneficial for the whole community. So I would be very supportive of a local hire preference for that position. That's all I have to add. Thanks so much.
Okay, with no more discussion with that, we have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to go to oral communications, and each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on the agenda. Our first speaker is John, it looks like Lundblad? Is that close? Okay, sorry, I couldn't read the writing exactly, so.
Honorable, honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is John Lundblad. You can ask the city clerk for the spelling. We know each other well. Live at 1160 via Santa Paolo in the Vista del Mar community. Have a commendation, a comment, and an opportunity. First, a commendation for the Public Works Department. If you haven't driven along Hacienda between Melrose and Emerald recently, come by and see the trees. The work that has been done by Public Works and in cooperation with the Urban Corps in San Diego has been just great, not only in getting the trees in, but they keep getting them weeded and watered, and they're growing, and they're coming out. The, and the walkway that has come in, and all the clearing out of the underbrush along the creek is really doing very, very nicely. So that is very nice, and I commend for that. The concern also has to do with Hacienda and gas prices lately. If you haven't driven Hacienda by the Costco gas station lately, you want to go very slow, because the Westerly Number Two Lane is getting backed up. And sometimes the Number One Lane is, as the left turn lane and those trying to go in right do not agree on whose turn it is. And you end up with the left turner turning into the Number One Lane, and the one in the right turn going straight ahead, and the whole Westerly Lane is blocked. I don't know what could be done about that, other than encouraging politeness, but as long as gas prices are going up, Costco is going to do a very good business, and that issue will probably be there. I just hope people will slow down and be aware that it is going to be a hazard. The other hazard are red light violators at the four intersections of Emerald across the freeway. But I sympathize with Captain Brown and the motor officers. There is simply no safe way that motor officers could operate in those intersections, do any kind of enforcement on a large scale. So we are probably just going to have to be ready for, everybody, I think, is just gradually learning that people are going to run not just last yellow lights, but clear red lights all along the way. And it's simply going to be another issue of a lack of patience. Then, let's see, commendation, the-
Hurry, hurry, because your time is up.
And the offer, last one. The Vista del Mar community is having their annual Community Breakfast on April 12th. If any of you would like to attend, and you are most welcome to attend, I will sell you a ticket tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I, and I want you to know that I see people running red lights all over town, and they're not, you're right, they're not just yellow lights, they're pure red lights, and people are running them lately, a lot, so.
And I, with all the time we have driven through, we have not seen accidents, near collisions, but again, there simply is no safe place that motor officers could operate there. They themselves would become part of the danger, so.
Thank you.
Put me down for a ticket, okay? Put me down for a ticket.
Check before you proceed, people.
And Mayor, for the council's edification, Costco is looking at relocating their gas pumps. It hasn't been official yet, but they are relooking, looking onsite at relocating their gas pumps, which hopefully would take some pressure off the neighboring streets.
I thought they were going to do that once, and then they decided not to do that.
They backed off, and they're relooking at it.
They're going to redo it again, okay. Okay, super. Okay, J.C. Nguyen, next speaker. Oh dear, you got a backache tonight? Come on, J.C. Talk to us, talk to us.
You're supposed to come up here with me. Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's been a little while with the COVID virus and all that. Got both vaccinations and both variants, so I'm pretty good, I guess. But I'm here because it's been brought to our attention that we are up to having an Easter egg hunt at Bringle Terrace Park on April the 16th, and perhaps we can show you all how it is to get volunteers together and get something done over there in City of Vista, because we always have a good turnout. But the Pride of Vista Lions is up for putting the insurance up and getting, we're going to get the eggs and the candy and the, and all the volunteers face painting pancake breakfasts, and get them kids out there scrambling for some Easter eggs on the, on the ball fields again this year, if it's, if it's okay with everybody up here. You know, we, we ask your permission, and we invite the whole city of Vista to show on up and have some fun again. We did it 10 years prior to COVID, 10 years straight, and two years off. Last year, we had the Easter Bunny in the bubble down at the Pepper Tree Frosty, and he got, kids got to come by and see the Easter Bunny. But this year, I think we could get back into it, and-
Is the Easter Bunny going to be in the bubble again this year?
No. Santa was in a couple of times downtown.
This is what we've done every year, is Santa Claus hosts the Easter Bunny.
Santa Claus helps his friend the Easter Bunny, because he had fallen on high times back in the recession, so we got together and helped him out. The elves came down from the North Pole, and we got it all done. And, and it was a great grand event, which a lot of you have come out to in the past, so.
So what do you need from us?
Well, they said something about just coming down and spreading the word, and those parks and recs are going to chip in a little fiscal money from the budget, and maybe-
The date is 4/16?
4/16, Saturday before Easter, correct.
Okay.
So maybe we can get the park fees waived, I don't know, you know, whatever, whatever we could do on that at a future meeting, we got time.
The city manager says-
Well, I've already sicked a couple people on it, so I already knew what he was going to say.
Whatever that means.
We look forward to just welcoming our kids back and enjoying Easter egg hunting in the city of Vista.
Have a good one, so.
I know I liked having it. I remember when you did it through the jazzercise and-
Oh, yeah, I used to dance.
Been a tradition that I think should continue, so. Thank you for having us, and-
Thanks, J.C.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, J.C. Thanks, all of you guys. Thanks. Yay, okay. So that is the end of our speakers. So with that, I want to do my, my comments here. And our first one is daylight savings time begins this Sunday, March 13th. Oh my gosh, that means we're going to be tired next week, everybody, right? Spring forward, fall back, spring forward. Yeah, it means we're going to be tired. Fire Chief Ned Vanderpoel is reminding residents to check their smoke detector and carbon monoxide alarms when resetting your clocks around the house to make sure they're working properly. The Vista Sheriff Station is seeking senior residents 50 years, 50 years, people, and older, for their senior volunteer program. The volunteers help promote public safety and crime prevention programs and assist at the sheriff's station. For more information, call 760-940-4434, 760-940-4434. And noted San Diego musician Leonard Patton performs a cabaret concert of Cole Porter this Saturday night, March 12th, at the Moonlight Amphitheater. This is Club M's last cabaret offering for the year. Ticket information is online at moonlightstage.com. And don't forget the Easter egg hunt on April 16th at Bringle Terrace Park. And that is the end of my comments, and so I'll go down the line here. Let's, I think I'll start down the other end with Councilmember Melendez today.
Hey, I don't have too much to add. I just want to say Happy International Women's Day. Thank you to all the women out there. Women do the majority of non-paid domestic labor, and they spend the majority of their money on their families and their communities. So women are awesome, and we're grateful for all those awesome women out there. Happy International Women's Day.
Very nice. Councilmember Contreras.
Just want to thank all my coworkers on staff, our sheriff captain, and soon-to-be captain, and potentially, and all my colleagues. We've had, we had a really great discussion today, and is always moving forward in a more inclusive direction. Tomorrow, I will be picking up trash at Luzduran Park. If you want to be there between 9:00 and 9:15, you'll see me, and we can have a conversation while we pick up the trash. So everybody have a good night, and thanks again.
Councilmember Green.
So if you want to come see me before you pick up trash, I'll get you bacon with the Kiwanis Club at Pegasus Cafe in Vista on South Santa Fe at 7:00 a.m. Yeah, we're the Sunrise Kiwanis, because we don't like our sleep. Come see us at 7:00 a.m. I did also write down that today is International Women's Day, and without the amazing women in my life, my wife Jennifer, my mom Rhonda, I got three amazing daughters, I wouldn't be the man that I am today. Raised by a single mom, and you're right, moms work hard, they do the most domestic unpaid labor, and they will put you above themselves. My mom gave me her, you know, last piece of bread, and she didn't eat nothing. So as far as women go, man, men, if you haven't already told a woman thank you and that you love her, even if you don't have one that you love, just go let them know. Hey, women, you're making the world a better place. Thank you, thank you, thank you. One other thing I want to recognize is we have three amazing women on our city council here in the city of Vista. And without these amazing women and all the work that was done for women's rights well before us, this wouldn't be possible. So as a man who is humbled and knows that I am here because of a woman, thank you to International Women's Day. That's it.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I can't top that, but special shout out and thank you to the women in my life, especially my wife and my mother. Thank you for all that they've done to make me what I am today.
Don't forget to wear green next Thursday, St. Patrick's Day, everybody. And I think it's still Taco Tuesday. My city manager.
And I'm surrounded by women at my house. Even my dog Sydney is female, so, yes, give thanks. Just want to let the public know that our- Just want to let the public know that our city council chamber, starting tomorrow, will become a hazardous zone and we will be redoing it for all the electronics. And so as a result, we will not allow to have, we will not have city council meetings until likely the last meeting in April. So from March 22 and April 12, we will be in the community room, but we will be taping them and airing them. And then all of the commission meetings will also be in the community room or possibly other conference rooms in the city, but not in the chambers during that time. So we're looking forward to having a system that works more efficiently for everybody. And lastly, I just wanted to congratulate our Captain White. And he is soon to be Commander White on Friday. And want to thank him, Justin White, for everything he's done for Vista. It was very difficult to come to Vista in March of 2020, right at the height of COVID, right when COVID started, basically. Gets to come to a new station, everybody's wearing masks, they're working split shifts, has to interact with the city and the department director team over Zoom for a number of months. So it wasn't an easy adjustment, but he's done a fantastic job and congratulations on his promotion. And then I wanted to welcome our new sheriff's captain, Ricardo Lopez, who's back there. And I will schedule meetings with all of you to meet the new captain and sit down with him. And I'm sure he'll come up after the meeting, just introduce himself if you haven't already talked to him. Thank you.
How about our city attorney, Darryl Piper?
Thank you.
How about our city clerk, Kathy Valdez? Claire, anything down there, Assistant City Clerk? That's it, nobody has anything else to say? We are adjourned at what time? 7:42.